Thank you. Alright, good morning everyone, we're back. Alright, so we are changing our agenda just a little bit. As soon as Dan from WSU walks in, we'll listen to him and then after Dan does his presentation, then it'll be the EDC.
I thought I heard on the news this morning that there was a wreck on Highway three that was pretty bad.
Over the, like this morning?
I thought it was this morning.
And since they come in now?
There's some bad wrecks last week.
Yeah, this last week there's been several.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one by the elementary school was terrible.
Oh yeah? By the elementary school?
Yeah. That was the big one, the fatality and.
Yeah, it was shocking, only one person died.
Let's hit a, hit a kids app deputy on his way to work.
Oh man.
Still a little confused, I've heard, I've read, uh, heard and read both. One, it was a medical issue and two, it was alcohol and related. But each one says, one doesn't refer to the other. As, one doesn't say it was medical, the other one doesn't say it.
Yeah, I think, I think Jamie, Jamie's post said that it was a cardiac.
Yeah, the paper was reporting.
Yeah, that sucks. Then we had the one up here on the one-on-one. By Wallace Nealon, and then one on the three.
And the other one on the three?
It's summer. Seems like we always have a lot more during the summer.
Lot more traffic.
Mm-hmm. That's why, because we're a cool place.
I would expect more in the fall, because I can see in the fall, that sun is right there, and it just blinds you.
Yeah. Thank goodness for clouds. Hey, come on up to the table. Thanks for running over.
No problem. Kevin was done early, I guess.
Uh, should get started.
Oh, okay.
Start on Monday.
So just doing a little change.
No problem.
Shifting the schedule, alright, well, go ahead.
Well, good morning, Commission and Mark. Thanks for having us, this isn't a typical briefing at all, I'm not gonna go through our extension report or anything, I'm not gonna go through all the great things that we do and provide our community a wide variety of programs, we're gonna solely focus on noxious weeds at this one, so this is Heidi, our noxious weed coordinator. Please, who haven't, who haven't met her, um, you wanna give a brief overview of your program?
Yeah, I gave an overview of the program. Um, so Randy and Sharon, you probably are familiar with the noxious weed program, but Pat, I know you're a little bit newer to the commissioner position, so, um, if you have any questions.
A lot newer.
If you have any questions, just let me know, or you can always follow up after, I'm happy to share more information. Um, but basically, the noxious weed program, um, is designed to, um, ensure that the county and its citizens are protected against the degrading impacts of noxious weeds in the community. Um, and the noxious weed control laws are set by RCW seventeen-ten and the WAC sixteen-seven-fifty, if you want to read more about them. Um, you're free to do that, but basically, the noxious weeds are all non-native invasive plants that pose some sort of impact or risk to our economy, natural resources, health and human safety, infrastructure, um, the environment. Once noxious weeds are established in an area, uh, control and eradication of them is very time consumptive and very costly, so our goal is to detect these infestations when they're early on in the area and eradicate them as soon as we can. And what our program does, we, we do a variety of things, but, um, the main goals of our program is to survey for weeds, notify property owners when noxious weeds are found on their property, um, provide assistance with control recommendations through educational site visits, we have fact sheets or documents that we design to share with the community. And in some cases, depending on the type of weed that is being treated, the control requirements, um, funding that we have available, we will assist the landowner with control. But a lot of that is based on the circumstance and the funding that we have available. So, and then we also have our projects that we do, so we get funding through Washington State Park, uh, United States Forest Service, we have funding through Department of Agriculture, and that's to work, um, so state parks, it's obviously to control noxious and invasive weeds on state parks within Mason County for Forest Service, it's on Forest Service lands, um, either campgrounds, roads, botanically significant areas, rock pits. We'll do rock pit inspections to make sure that those are weed-free sources of gravel to be used in construction projects for the Forest Service.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Yeah, you take it here and put it over here and now you just keep going.
And I, and I'm sure it has, I can see in my mind the different times that it has, I never thought, that's why.
Yeah, material source is one of the main contaminated materials, soil, gravel, um, contaminated equipment moving from different projects, that's one of the major ways that weeds move around, and so those inspections are very important to ensure that we're not bringing weeds to new areas, and the most cost-effective way to control weeds is prevention, so if you can get them prevented early on, then you have to, don't have to deal with the cost of control down the line.
One of the parts that we wanna really focus on is, um, Heidi's fantastic, identifying weeds, working with people, getting it taken care of with the limited money and time that she has. The problem is, when you get these grants, you're working in forest service land, you're working on state parks, you're doing these pieces, the general public is not aware of what they have on their property. So then she comes back to the office at four o'clock from being on the field all day, and she's returning all these phone calls to landowners, which are not contentious phone calls, but you're talking about pesticides, herbicides, planting and things, that people get a little, you know, it's my property, all that good stuff, so she does a good job managing that, but those are really intense phone calls. Then people coming in saying, this is one that happened on Thursday, Harstein Island gentleman, injury that someone sprayed foxglove, and now it's looking ugly, wanted to know why, kinda shaking a fist a little bit. Um, those are relationships that are really key of the community, that they understand what a noxious weed is, what's on the property or not.
And that wasn't even an application that we did, but because, because people think of noxious weeds when they think of herbicide applications first, we do screen a lot of those calls, and typically, we'll send them to, to Rhodes, is usually who is, is doing the herbicide application.
So what we wanna move towards, because there's also a noxious weed control board, um, appointed by the commission. We would love to take the point-five FTE that Heidi has in her department and move it to a one-point-O FTE. You already have the point-five with benefits already being paid for currently. We'd like to see it moved into next year's budget as a one-point-O. That would give the time to keep doing the work that's being done, and the time that Heidi then can have, more interacting with the public on an intentional hourly basis, to build the relationship, so people are aware what's on their property, instead of more a contentious one, and finding noxious weed board members. We don't, we have, like, like many of your volunteer boards, they're, they're, they're not filled. And this is one that needs to be filled by the RCW, it has set by, I think it's three members of the five board members must be primary agricultural producers. Mason County's rough to find that.
One on the board, right there in the middle, Ken Van Buisker.
Can't wait for him to.
So the, this is one where we wanna intentionally work more directly with the public, and, and have hours dedicated for that, instead of chasing our tail with grants, we'll still get the grants, but then Heidi's not a hundred percent of her time up in Forest Service lands, on state lands, things like that, but more in Mason County, in residence. One of the more noxious ones would be hog.
Hogweed, giant hogweed.
Which, which can burn you, it's pretty nasty stuff, but many people don't know that they have that, I'm, I'm one of them, I don't know what these plants are. Um, but that way Heidi can have an opportunity to work with the public on that.
That's a really good way to say all that, and what's happening, so right now with our current point-five FTE is once we get that person started, we are very much focused on the project work, and we have to really plan our time to complete the work within the amount of time that we have that position budgeted for. If we had them working for the whole year, it would open up the amount of educational site visits we could do with community members. We could do more door knocking, we could do more survey to detect these weeds, um, it would also help with being able to update our fact sheets more regularly, maybe plan volunteer or community events, presentations. Um, it would open us up to have more long-term planning throughout the year, and more support throughout the year, so that we could plan more of these educational components to the program, which are very crucial pieces that right now, during the busy time of the year, we, we are struggling to find the time to fully do it, and fully support all parts of the community. So for example, like with our project work, if, if we're going out to Browns Creek Campground to do herb-robber treatments, then our work for that week, it's out in the Scope Valley, so we're doing survey on Forest Service roads. And what I've identified is that because our project work takes us to very specific areas, and when we have funding to treat very specific weed species, we're repeatedly visiting the same areas. It doesn't allow us to open up more survey i- within the entire part of the county, so I've noticed, like, the north shore of the Hood Canal, it's been a very neglected area of our program, just because we don't have project work that takes us out there. The Matlock area is another region that we just don't have a lot of project work planned in, and we don't have funding to work in those areas, so inevitably, we don't survey them and support those areas as much as the parts of the community where we have the funded project work. And the funding through state parks, Forest Service, WSDA to treat specific weeds, that's never going to be project work that we'll walk away from, those are crucial parts of the program, and we will still keep reapplying for and applying for new funding, because it is a great way to supplement our program. But it doesn't allow for us to fully support and educate the citizens living in the county as if we had a, a full-time person where we could do more site visits throughout the year, and dedicate more time to survey areas that are not associated with these projects that we already have funded.
So Heidi wrote up, um, some explanations as to why the position needs to go in, in that direction. I'm well aware that it is a really tight budget time for lots of different things.
Yeah.
Which is why we're starting the conversation, we're not saying we need it, we want it, it's do or die. But we wanna start the conversation of, if we have the funds to make this a full-time job, we could do so much more that in time will help everybody out longer term.
So Dan, when I first started, uh, we had a lot of partnerships that we did, but, uh, you guys also paid for a share of those partnerships. Is there a possibility that you could look into some of that? You have a, a half-time position that we're providing, that already has the benefits. You know, if your share was able to cover that, then I could see us, you know, saying yes easily, if we're just increasing what you're bringing in. So, I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just telling you my options.
Okay. No, that is good to know, and, and something, this is kind of a, um, abstract example, but about two weeks ago, I, Rhodes called, and they were wondering if maybe our program could take on some of the roadside spraying. And I told them we'd be open to it, but really, it's a, a capacity issue, and this was a very, like, abstract plan, it's nothing that's set in stone, they're just trying to make some, some long-term plans with roadside spraying. So I might.
But were they willing to pay?
They, they, they would have, they would be, and so I went and talked to them and got a little bit more information, and this is like a two-year-out thing, you know, this is nothing that they're trying to find a decision for now, but if we, if we knew, okay, well, we have someone that's not me, also working all year, we could maybe incorporate some more of that stuff into our program, but, but right now, we just don't have the capacity to, to take on things like that.
So, so you're asking not to fill the position now, but to start that conversation for next year's budget?
Yes, for next year's budget, and we, um, so we did, right now, benefits are budgeted for the entire year of the position. And so we talked to HR and found that it would be about an additional twenty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy dollars to increase the position to a a full-time FTE.
Which also then goes to, which I know you're aware of, retaining part-time employees is near impossible, you're getting them in, they're leaving for a full-time job. If we had someone full-time, that retention that Mason County struggles with is right there as well.
And it would be a great way to increase trust with landowners we work with. People are very resistant to us coming on their property and surveying and helping them with weeds, which I understand, and so often, it takes repeated contact to gain trust and cooperation with landowners. And seeing the same face every year is a great way to help build that trust, instead of because you're, you're making a more personal relationship, instead of seeing, um, a, a different seasonal person coming each year, so that's another, I think, benefit that would, um, be added to having a, a full-time permanent person.
Right, so grants, I'd be interested in if there are any grants out there to help cover that position. But I, I kinda like the, the opportunity of looking at Public Works too, and maybe we could do something, or maybe they could do, they can figure something out in their budget. That'd be great.
I didn't think about that, I, I didn't think about that, that angle on that, but that would be a county then, the, supporting a county position already, helping each of these departments, yeah.
That happens, that, that's actually more common than you know.
No, and other county noxious weed programs do that too, where they will have their noxious weed specialists that are employed by noxious weeds, but they'll do tanze pulling on road sides, and that's all built to, you know.
I could see maybe they'd be paying for an assessment, uh, we do assessments now on different things, I know we have to send people out to do it, maybe that's you know, you know what, we have, we have a problem, uh, they probably have a solution waiting for an answer, let's just ask them, find out.
Okay.
I'll give Laura a call and see if you schedule the meeting and, and chat about options, but this is the beginning of a conversation, this isn't something that we need decisions on now, we just wanna start the conversation with the commission to build this program in time, because what we saw is we're just chasing our tail with these grants. We're getting the grants, and they're all out in the more further reaches of the county, but then the public isn't that interface that we would like.
Have you utilized our record at all?
We, we have been utilizing her, yeah. Um, very specific grants, and as you're aware, the public funding of grants right now are kinda harder, and you're not always certain, so we're, we're navigating that.
I know this might be taboo to say to you guys, but what about University of Washington checking? Seeing if they have.
I, I can tell you, I can tell you flat out, uh, they're thank you for understanding where I'm at currently.
I only say that because my son just graduated.
I kinda would, I, I would kinda rather be a county employee right now, to be honest, so, um, but we're doing just fine, right?
And the, the Rhodes thing too, I really wanna highlight, that was a very, like, sto- start of a conversation, like, they called just to see, so the details of that have not, so I don't wanna, like, hi- yeah.
And I was saying that, what we're saying is, is we know that there are opportunities when that stuff comes up.
Yes.
There's times throughout the history of this county where we're using, you know, point-five for this and point-five for that, and, uh, utilizing, at one point, we got in trouble and had to pull back a bunch of stuff, because we're using Rhodes for everything before I came. I had to pay for it after, right after I got elected, uh, emergency management was covering, uh, covered out of roads, uh, there was a lot of stuff that was, was supposed to, but it was, but these aren't tangibles that are, that are actually being done.
Not supposed to be, yeah.
This might happen. Well, I really enjoyed this conversation, because I didn't think about that angle, but again, this is the beginning of something that I kinda wanted to bring the commission along with. Um, because I don't wanna just, I'm just not just gonna put it in a budget and have you guys then say, what is this about? I'd rather have, have that conversation, so, we'll connect with, um, with Public Works and begin that conversation, and then we'll, we'll bring it back to you, um, if things are moving in, in that direction.
Okay.
But I definitely appreciate you thinking about this as a longer-term plan of what can be done to better engage the public. So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Perfect, how many openings do you have on the, the board right now?
We have two right now.
Two.
And the, uh, the, with the noxious weed board, so we need to, we've had people reach out, interested in some of our positions. We need to have one member from each region of the county, it's divided up into five regions, and so that's been the challenge, is we've had, um, we have had interest, but it's been in positions that we already have filled currently, um.
Can you let us know which?
Yeah, I can, it's, so it's, I can send a map, but it's the region that's, um, on the west side of the Hood Canal, north of about Potlatch State Park, Polash State Park in north.
No, yeah, I'm usually good at getting up to that, but this has been a hard one for me to get anybody for.
Yeah.
I reached out though, but they just don't fit.
No, and I've been also doing some outreach to different producers in that area, and I thought I was very close to maybe having a board position, and I just haven't had luck. And then we have, um, the North Mason area as well, that we are lacking a board position for.
And, and the state weed board just lowered, there used to be four producers was required of the five, they just lowered it this last year to three. So, it threw us a little bit of a bone, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't help in counties like ours that are just.
Can you find a connection with the board commissioner from Duwana?
Yeah, I can.
Could you make a connection with that to make it fit within your?
I'm sure that we could, that that could fit within the guidelines of the.
People are just up to now to.
To volunteer, yeah.
I'll reach out, out to them.
And then all they need to do is get ten signatures of people in the area to support them, supplement the application of the county, and then you guys would approve that.
That's so much harder than.
It is, it is, it, it makes it a rough, a rough.
And they actually have some, some administrative powers to be a board.
They do, yeah, they, they, they do, and, and that is something that we do work with Tim White head-on, understanding, because they do have actually finding authority within the county, they can actually find people, and that does come from the county itself. So it's this uniqueness out there that is, uh, it's really an unfunded mandate from the state that you'll have to deal with, that we do manage very well, but it's this tough spot to find that volunteerism.
And this is, filling board positions is not a Mason County-specific problem. Many of the noxious weed boards have an issue filling these board positions, like I just came from Thurston County, the entire time I was there, we were struggling to fill one of the board positions, and it was a consistent, it was one district that was consistently challenging to fill, so we, yes, so it's, it's not a problem specific to our county, it's just hard to find noxious weed.
So we'll send you the map, so that you can kinda see what, what districts we're free in. Uh, we'll leave this with you guys, this is the justification and job description, just for you to kinda think about moving forward, but I do wanna thank you for your time and, and consideration as we move forward.
Can you clarify what you mean by producers, because I don't think we want people producing weeds.
So, so the state leaves it open for interpretation. We have people that sometimes have an apple orchard that sell their apples to their neighbors, we've considered that to be a producer.
It's a pretty loose requirement.
It's a very loose requirement, yeah.
Actually, this marijuana grows up there.
Yep, I know, and technically, that's a producer, so.
Yeah.
But you guys get to a point, so I would do some vetting for sure.
Do you have one more copy, and I'll give this to McKinsey so she can put it in?
Yeah, I do. And I left the salary range, uh, because that wasn't a finalized number, HR has to review it, so I left that blank, but, um, yeah, and if you have any questions, please feel free to, to reach out, we're happy to, to talk about it, yeah.
Alright.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for running over.
Yeah, no problem.
Is it still raining out there?
No, the sun is out.
No, it's sunny actually.
Nice.
Enjoy your Monday meetings.
Yeah, have a good day everyone.
Alright, Kevin. Come on up.
Next victims.
Yes. Now, the next participants. We try not to have victims here.
A couple of printed copies here for the commission, and then, um, also.
You sent it over also, so I got it. I don't need a print, thanks.
You might like a hard copy. Pressure cards, are you on hard copy?
Yeah.
You saw this last week.
Yeah, this is, it's like running like for you.
Yeah.
It's definitely.
I got it on my screen, thanks. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you again.
I hope I don't bore you too much, you've heard most of this.
That's okay.
I heard all of it last week.
I remember. Good thing I didn't change anything. Let's see if I can do this. This is exciting.
The anticipation is killing us.
I'll send him my laptop that we. Yeah, maybe let's try yours, maybe if, uh, maybe that might be better. Just play, is there anything? Wifi? We'll use the wifi, then we can get the zoom link on there.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Do you have the shared screen?
Um, it's, I have to go through my system settings to allow it. Yeah, so that's, because I've, I've never done that on this computer before.
Is that my computer?
Yeah. It is, my apologies. Now, now we'll race.
Good, sounds perfect, yeah, if yours kicks in, we'll go with that. If anyone needs to, uh, rush out of here later, I'll let you know, there's no state patrol today.
Oh, there's not?
No, I, because I would've found them.
They passed two on the way in, but they were talking to each other, they didn't care about us. It's funny, look at this page four, you can see why we can't find anybody that are producers.
Oh yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
They got a list of them.
Okay, I think I'm doing that, Jason, sorry, thank you guys for.
Oh man, I was just about.
Okay.
Winner, winner.
Okay, um, so first off, thanks for your patience this morning, uh, if, if we're playing a little bit of catch-up here, but, um, we're happy to be here with you this morning. Um, I'll just kinda start off by saying, um, I think Jason will have an opportunity to introduce himself here in a few minutes, um, but I'll just say first and foremost, thank you for the support to be able to do this study over the past, uh, eight to ten months or so. Um, this was an American Rescue Plan-funded, uh, study with the Economic Development Council, and I think it was pretty informative for us as we went through it, we had a good opportunity to look at some data, um, take a look at kind of current state of things, uh, in our local economy, but that may be a context of some bigger picture items that we might not have some control over. Um, and then really, a key component of this was the outreach work that, that we did with Jason, and having some, uh, industry-specific focus groups that really helped kind of inform some of the recommendations that Jason has been walking through today, so um, if not for the support of the commission and the county on this project, it would not have happened, so, uh, a big thank you, um, for your support on that, so um, with that, I'll kinda turn it over to Jason, and when you're ready for me to move to the next slide, you just tell me.
Sounds good, next slide. So, um, I think most of you have met me before, uh, I just live down the way in Olympia. And I think I most recently came to you to talk about the Pac-Salish, um, Economic Development District that we got approved with federal government, before the federal government changed. Um, but hopefully, that's all gonna move forward, we'll be able to do some of these infrastructure projects that, um, we've talked about. So with respect to this project, it's very, it, it, uh, I think we got really creative, um, about how, how to approach it, because we're looking at industry clusters, and Mason County's not that large, uh, population-wise, and so, trying to figure out how does the economy work here, um, and so we'll, we'll cover all those things, so we did, so you, there's another, uh, a data package, I think it's like seventy slides of just data on the economy, if you wanna nerd out, feel free, um, I enjoyed it, Kevin enjoys it, he's nerdy.
Guilty as charged.
But it, um, it, it's really in- informative in terms of like how things work here. Um, we looked at the supply chain, uh, uh, assessment, and we'll come back to that in a minute, and that's basically like, what are we purchasing inside Mason County, what are we purchasing outside, and can we bring some of that back in and keep the dollars here? Did a bunch of community presentations to make sure people knew what we're up to, the business community survey, so that if we didn't find somebody because they're part of a focus group, they still could participate and share their ideas. Um, this, the focus groups were incredible, I learned a, a lot actually, um, just sitting down with people who do the businesses, you know, it's one thing to look at the numbers, and then it's another to hear, like, how things work. And then we, um, not unexpectedly, got some feedback from the, um, forest product sector that, that we don't, we didn't understand them enough, and so we did a little bit extra, um, to, to dive down and see what, how that works, okay? So in terms of identifying the cluster targets, we, um, we employed these criteria. Um, employment volume, uh, is, in, in a place like Mason County, it, volume matters, right, that's where people work, that's how they support their families. Uh, is it in a place like Mason County, it, volume matters, right, that's where people work, that's how they support their families. Um, those aren't always high paying jobs, but they could be one of two jobs that people work um to, to make things go. Location quotient is super important, um, and that is, it's again, you know, no surprise for you. Logging, shellfish, these are things that built this community, um, those are important industries to protect and um sustain. We looked at employment growth, so what's, what's happening organically, just what, what, where is the market going in Mason County? And so sometimes it's not a lot, it's a huge number of um jobs that are being added, but it's percentage wise, it's something that's starting to take off. How can we encourage that and support it, diversify it? Um, and presence of above average wages, this is how we get to um manufacturing, for example, it's not. You don't have ten thousand people employed in manufacturing, but the people that are employed in manufacturing make a good wage, um, and we want more of that. And then finally multiplier potential. Um, so these are, these are uh industries that don't necessarily have a lot of people in them, but they. Produce and purchase so much in the uh economic system that. It creates more jobs in other supporting industries, for example. So, next. And this is where people usually ask me to leave bubble graph. What, what we did here is we, we said, let's, like, if we're gonna pick some industries that we wanna invest in with limited resources. Let's find, um, let's consider occupations like people's life, uh livelihood, and so what we did is we filtered out government. Um, and education, food services, these are all things that will exist no matter what. We said, well, what's been happening with occupations and so what you can see here um on the, on the vertical axis is. Average annual wage and then on the one below um uh is the forecast growth for that occupation. And so it's kinda um. You mean, I'm not surprised, but it just always stands out to me, registered nurses, great wage, a lot of growth. Baby boomers coming and coming and coming for a while, so. Um, but there's also business, business, just doing business, general uh managers. Business schools, like where we wanna kinda start pushing people a little bit. Uh, accountants, you know, quiet but steady job. Um, and uniquely here, the gambling dealers, right, live working at the casino is a growing occupation. I think it has something to do with registered nurses and the baby boomers. Um, but we can come back to that, the security guards is another one, that's just uh, you know, that's kind of back to the location quotient, having a prison. In the county is unique, go ahead.
Also, security guards would fall under correctional.
Yeah, yeah. So this one I, uh, this slide I included just to show you the sheer demand for registered nurses, right, this, these are. Um, this was a kind of a snapshot pool in August twenty twenty four of uh job ads. And they're not necessarily all in Mason County, these job ads, they're ads that show up in Mason County because the demand is so high for uh. Registered nurses, but also retail salespersons, all kind of physical therapists. You, you, one of the focus groups we, we had was really interesting, you know, they um. We were talking about um. Health services and you know what kind of specific practices are lacking here that people have to leave Mason County to get. And it's a sort of a fine line by, is there enough demand here to sustain a, a specific practice? In, or if not, when will there be and we're talking about all these people that are moving to Mason County because they can choose to live wherever they want and still work. And so it's gonna be an interesting time. So uh, at the end of the day, we um identified these clusters, healthcare, social services, we lumped them together, again, back to uh my. Comment about the volume, um, you know, I think. With healthcare and social services together and they have a really good system, um, they, they really interact well, I think that. Is enough of a cluster to focus on, forest products, same as always, manufacturing, very uh interesting, we'll come back to manufacturing, it's very eclectic. It's not, you know, it's like uh, if we were talking about Seattle King County Boeing, they have a ton of employees, they have all this uh really interesting. I'll just leave it there, interesting things, that it's hard to imagine somebody came up with the idea and they're making money off it. Agriculture and aquaculture, we lumped those because. What's that?
Pressure cars.
Yeah.
Manufacturing, yeah, unique product.
Yep. Uh, and you know, what a place to do it, right, I, I, I see a lot of growth potential in manufacturing here with, with space you have and. Uh, and even though I, Kevin, we're not gonna talk how fast I drove here today. But it only took me about twenty minutes from Olympia, so you're pretty close to I five, you know, it's not a big deal. Uh, and then finally accommodation and food service and we chose that. Um, because of the, remember the criteria, the multiplier effect, right, with all the, so every time, you know, somebody pays a. Lodging tax, all that goes into a fund that you can use to, to do cool things and so. And, and food service, it's um. That's back to the volume of employment, there's so many people employed in a food service and every time any other kind of business, industry grows, more people are buying food, sales tax. Okay. So I talked about supply chain gap, so these are things, um, this is a high level slide, so would, so. Businesses in Mason County are buying goods and services. And a lot of that, they buy from each other, the more of that, the better because of the sales tax implications, but. Um, these are things that people are purchasing mostly outside of Mason County. And uh, you know, they're just, to give you some examples, janitorial services, right, so this could be a, a corporation, you know, Acme dot com. Janitorial, right, and they come into the county and clean a building or whatever, there's no reason that we couldn't have that here, right? There's no reason we couldn't support a business that could provide janitorial services. I mean, my personal breweries, I.
I'd welcome them.
I, you know, um, but breweries are really interesting because we're talking, it's, the supply chain is so diverse, right, it's. So brewery could, they're buying hops, they're buying um metal barrels, they're, they're buying all these different things, alright, but cumul- cumulatively. Um, it adds up, um, and so. What we don't want is Kevin to try to uh like create all these new industries from scratch, but there are people who exist here that could pivot. To provide services that we're purchasing outside of the region, okay? And these are specific, um, so Kevin and I are still tracking these down, they're so interesting, so farm labor contractors, right? These are the people that bring the labor to a farm and do all the work and it's usually seasonal, it's transitional, right? And are, so what we don't know yet, we're trying to figure out is, you know, is this a national type company? That figures out where to put the labor when as they're moving across for seasonal harvests. If it's something that you could do here, it's, it's millions of dollars that are going into these companies that aren't located here. And I don't know if something we can fix or not, we're gonna try to figure it out. Other one that, um, two others I wanna talk about, just for example, surgical appliance supplies manufacturing. Back to the people who build crazy things here, like with, some of them are actual health. Products, right, and so could we help?
Does.
You know, and, but sometimes it doesn't make sense, right, you can't make all the scalpels because somebody in New Jersey's already got a thousand people working on it, but there's certain things that we could make here. And then ambulance services, I mean, we have. Uh, in Lewis County, they build ambulances, right, and so we, what, um. Do we need to import the services to Mason County or could we supply them, I don't know. Okay, next. Okay, so we have um snapshots of the target industries, I'm only gonna show you one so you know it's available if you're interested in, in looking at it. But what we um look at is what are the core sub industries for each target industry sector? And we, and then um the top line there is that all industries, so you have sixteen thousand people employed in Mason County. So for this forest products, you can see the subsector industries. Uh, and we, we were very liberal, single family, home construction, logging, sawmills are sort of the major, um. And so you've got about five hundred of your sixteen thousand people employed in these, these subsector industries. And you can see what has happened over the last five years and you can also look at the forecast. Um, growth for the next five years. I, I do think, so it's interesting to look at logging, okay, the Vex code one thirteen three ten. Hundred ninety-eight people employed in logging with an average annual wage of ninety-two thousand dollars, that's a big deal.
And you're looking at that growth as a negative growth area?
Yeah, not, it's negligible, um, you know, it always shows that.
Gotcha.
Every year, but, and what we talk about in the, uh, the detailed report is. The growth possible in old industries, right, so. With, in logging, there's all kinds of new products, there's biofuels, there's, there's all kinds of things you can do and so I, I don't worry. So the formula is like based on history and, you know, uh. Clinton shutting down harvesting force ninety-two, et cetera, it doesn't look like a great growth industry, but you have to look at it differently, right? This is just, that's just basic math. Well, the machines are so different, it used to be in the old days, you, you put a choker on it, you'd bring it up out of the woods, hold it on yards and. You'd live it all yourself, now they've got machines, just grab it, live it, section it, send it to the side and it's amazingly done. You, you know, I'm glad you brought that up, cause in our focus group, one thing that really struck me was um, the timber industry folks were saying. E- everyone thinks we're doing automation and we don't need employees anymore and that's not the case, they have all kinds of employees, they just do different things, right? It's still an industry, it takes a lot of people to get things done. Um, but I also wanted to, because I know people get bored with me talking about location quotient, but. A location quotient means, so you, if you have a location quotient of one, that means you have about. The amount of industry any other um county would have in America. And so if you look at logging, thirty-six point one four, like is it, it's, it's very unique to have the size of the timber industry that you have. And then we did this for each sector, and this is again staying with um. Forest products, what, what are the fastest growing sec- subsectors of the target industry cluster and? Housing construction. Um, it's, it's actua- it's kinda a little bit of a boon in Mason County, right? Uh, and the sawmills, again, they told us, if I had presented this to you five years ago, it would have shown probably three percent decrease in employment, but it's grown. Because the product is in demand.
Do you just want me to roll through?
Yeah, I thought we took these out. Uh, we'll go back one, just for fun.
Sure.
So, um, this is interesting, so when we, we combined agriculture and aquaculture and um, I wanna go back to. Location quotient, if you scroll down to the, not penultimate, but the third from last line, there's shellfish farming. I, I barely can fit the location quotient in the box, it's um so unique here and I am not going to editorialize, but. The inability to export shellfish to China in particular is devastating to that industry. And I, I feel bad for that, I mean, and you have, you know, Taylor Shellfish, for example, among others. Is a family business that survived all kinds of things, but this is, in my opinion, unnecessarily cruel.
So everybody needs to eat a lot of gooey duck.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. You win.
Get your, get your Zen's cookbook out.
Right? Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure.
I don't wanna make people look at tables. So, um, we have all the data. You can uh enjoy it at your pleasure, but I uh, I think, you know, the EDC. Um, he, they, uh commissioned this study and wanna take action on it, there's really three different ways that the EDC can support. Um, growing the economy, uh, the trickiest one, and I know Sharon, you've been through some of these meetings, was, was the workforce development, right? You know, there's, we have these regional workforce systems that have a lot of acronyms and uh, they change, right? Today, here's the priority, here's another, well, the EDC can be like the translator. What was that show, they had the angry Obama translator guy? You know, I, I think that the EDC can learn what the systems are, what the, where the grants are, where the opportunities are, help businesses get access to the labor. Leaving it to them would be also cruel. Supply chain connections, so um Kevin has all the data now, it's pretty fascinating, like what, uh, I've told the story before, in Thurston County, we were. We were importing um millions of dollars of corrugated fiber boxes to ship things out of Thurston County. So we're, we're literally buying boxes, shipping them to Thurston County and then shipping stuff out, and so now we have. Uh, manufacturer of boxes in the county, right, so it's capturing those dollars. And then facilitating access to infrastructure, training other resources, um, so uh, you know, that's. Mason has done really well, um, getting curb grants, you know, but those come, those are like hundred thousand, hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, right? And we, we have multi-million dollar problems, you know, for sewer, water, um, site prep. And, you know, so you can, we can say we love the idea of manufacturing, but if you don't have a site. That doesn't have rail access or doesn't have power and we need a new substation, we need millions of dollars of support and so I think now that we have our, our district formed that. And, and somebody hired to lead it, we should be able to move forward on that, okay? Okay, just quickly, so three slides of actions, um, what, we, Kevin will, can tell you more, but I just, the, the. Information and ideas that came out of those focus groups was phenomenal and. Um, I had told Kevin before, I had, I did one of these in Thurston County where they, we, we met with the auto mall, owners of the auto mall businesses. And I, I said, hey, are you, are you okay if we're going with electric cars, you know? And they said, that's great, we make more money on electric cars, did you know our power goes out for six hours at a time? And so just having that, those industry relations are as like very important to understand what's going on. Usually a lot of easy fixes off the bat. Um, the supply chain um gaps, we need to look into those, some of those. You can, you can fill, I told the cardboard story, but you can't replace petroleum, like that's not gonna happen here, right? We spent a lot of money on petroleum, but we're not gonna produce it here. Talked about workforce, this, the sites, um, so it, it, you know, the way it works right now is Washington State kind of provides this. I would kinda, I don't know what I would call it, it's, it's a website where you can, like a site select, a site selector can visit and they can see what available sites are. I think Mason has more sites than um available than are present on that website, so getting those up just enough. Uh, again, is important. You, I, so when we put together our regional economic development district, I did sort of a survey of all the counties that are part of that. And I, everybody has needs, right, there's so, more needs than can be addressed. And so I think we've gotta start prioritizing what sites are most important, ready to go, and we talk about this in the report a little later, like. We know that the federal government's talking about upgrading a naval base nearby and could we be a part of that? Okay. Yeah, I just talked about all those, the Farm Bureau is interesting, um, the, so the Farm Bureau does a really good job of representing ag collectively at the legislature for lobbying. Do, does Mason County have a coordinated um ask to send to the Farm Bureau to take to the legislature? Uh, these are conversations that we can have with the growers and producers.
A lot of people think that the Farm Bureau is specifically more targeted to the east.
A lot of people think that the Farm Bureau is specifically more targeted to the east side of the state because they do have the large fields and everything else, but. But we have a lot of ag here in Mason County that people, I, I don't think they understand.
It's really interesting. So Larry Bolts from the Farm Bureau participated in the focus group and he's a, I think he's a tremendous advocate for the, for the farmers in the region and in Mason County in particular. And one of the things that came out of that discussion was um, that they would love to be able to supply more locally. So they would love to find more customers for what they produce locally, and so. Um, Julie Knott with Blue Zones, when, when she was doing that, um, had worked really hard with Mason Health on, you know, looking at what they do in their cafeteria to get more local. Um, produce and things like that into their, into their menu planning and everything, and they went from something like under a thousand dollars a year. In spending locally on food to like twenty-eight thousand in a year, you know, and so like that's. Those are the kinds of things that we think, you know, would be really impactful in the ag community. Having a, having a, you know, maybe a county-led advisory, ag advisory board might be helpful. That might be something that, you know, with WSU. Um, like, you know, just listening in on the noxious weed conversation, that, that's something that might be a, might be a good way to kind of facilitate a little bit more. You know, advocacy on behalf of, of our local farmers, but I thought that was a really productive focus group.
Yeah, I, and both ag and shellfish, um, it. It's pretty clear they were asking, one, asking us to help them with one thing in particular. Like, remember, we just talked about how fast housing is coming here and there's all these new residents. Uh, in, in Mason County already has on the books that you're a, a farm-first community, right? And that, that means that this is kind of a way of life. Farming and shellfish is what, who, who we've been for hundreds of years. And um, but some people come in and they don't like it, they don't like the smell, they don't like the look, right? And so there's, there's some education uh, about. The nature of the community that needs to happen still that we sometimes forget to do.
Sometimes it's not a skunk.
Yeah. No. Um, I, well, so. This is a little bit of reiteration, but I, I think coordinating with the healthcare sector, right? They, you have Mason General, you have these small practitioners, you have social services providers that can provide services, but they don't have a building. And we have empty buildings, and so there are just these things that we can shore up to, to strengthen. Um, this, this system and with more, uh, you know, we have an aging population, we have more people moving in from outside. And so what is the right combination of services to be able to, to, to have available? Mason General's doing a whole campus plan right now, you know, it's, it's uh, kind of a big time.
Yeah, and the other issue that was sort of looming over this part of the discussion was, of course, the lack of primary care in North Mason and the role mobile integrated health is playing in helping do that. So um, definitely looking at ways to recruit new provider opportunities and specialties to the community as, as our population ages and requires those services.
Yeah, for sure. And then, uh, as Kevin alluded to earlier, just the, the markets for local products, right? These, uh, s- some of the farmers, you know, they used to do hay and hay sold and now it doesn't sell, nobody's buying hay. And so the, the market's changing, but they can produce um, specific goods that, that people buy in bundles, like hospitals and schools. They buy millions of dollars of food, um, could more of it be from, from here? And it's, it's always a little complicated, right? Seasonality and all that stuff, but there, these are conversations to have to find out if we can build markets.
That's that.
That's that.
I think it's neat that you're, a lot of what you do too, you. The information transfers over to like techno, so you're, you're helping them understand where that work, work source is needed.
Yeah.
And uh, I, it's just a good partnership, I think.
I, I love it. Yeah, we did this thing a couple of years ago because they, you, you know, the workforce systems, they get. Orders from on high, from the federal government that don't necessarily match local conditions. And so one thing we did a couple of years ago is we created a thirty, thirty for thirty, twenty thirty, I think it was, and it was. Jobs that expect to be adding thirty positions that pay over thirty thousand dollars. Um, it, over the next ten years, so that you can then craft your workforce training programs to fill those positions and that's sort of an anchor. Thing for your economy and then.
It's thirty by thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And then. Commissioner Tarzwell can still do weird manufacturing stuff, make a ton of money, right? But, but at least we're, we're keeping the rest of the system moving.
Yeah, and I'll just say one other thing, so I know you guys have to get back to it, but um, I think this will be really helpful for us as we kind of chart our course for the things that we're gonna focus on, but. Um, we didn't wait until the report was done to start working on these things, so we've already started to help some of our manufacturers get connected with other. Potential um, revenue streams for their businesses to help supply products outside of the area to new customers that they wouldn't have otherwise. Um, we're getting ready and I think we'll announce it this evening at the planning commission meeting, but we are co-hosting a youth employment roundtable with Pack Mountain. Um, to, to bring the Cedar High School kids in in particular who've been so consistent in their participation with the planning commission meetings. Um, to help get them connected to different job resources and, um, you know, so we'll, we'll send, share an invite with all of you to participate in that with, with the planning commission as well. Participate in that in a listen-only mode. Um, this is an opportunity for those students and young people to kind of talk about the challenges that they're facing and then. Hear about some of the resources that can help overcome those challenges. So really trying to think about that career pipeline and, and those pathways to keep. Um, keep, you know, people here and engaged in our local economy. So um, we're excited about this. I think this went really well um, for our study and we're just, uh, we're eager to get to work on the other things that Jason talked about today.
And so you work with Ty and, and Gretchen at the high school also?
Yeah, so I mean, that's where we've been getting our student interns from and we've been participating in their quarterly CTE meetings and just trying to find other. Um, employers who are willing to take those students on and um, it's been a great experience for us at the EDC and I know that other employers have, have done it and had positive results. I think having those students come here and engage with you all, um, you know, Lalo, who was just most recently with us, the ability, his ability to get up and. You know, and, and interact very confidently with all of you, um, speaks to the caliber of students at, at Shelton High School and. Um, you know, I think that's something that, um, you know, it just, it says a lot about their program there.
And he was not a junior or senior, right?
He was a freshman.
Yeah.
Fifteen-year-old, yep, yep.
Yeah.
Can't imagine.
Just amazing. It's very remarkable.
Yeah, so wanna keep that kind of, uh, you know, that energy and momentum going, make sure when he's done with school, he comes back here to work.
Yeah. Keep it local.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. And because I don't think I'll be here publicly to say it, congratulations and thank you for everything, Mark, over the past four years. It's been great to work with you and. Miss seeing you around, but don't be a stranger.
Well, thank you, yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, it's been nice to go out to see and, and interact with the EDC and. Planning, how do we bring more industry? How do we bring more development? Um, to areas that we want it within our community and I think that's gonna continue to, to happen and. I'm glad that we have information to actually make some of those decisions on and target some of those relationships that we could maybe um, use to, to advertise us a little bit more.
Well, we have a blueprint.
So, yeah, it's great.
Thank you all.
Good seeing you again.
Yeah.
You too.
All right. Kel?
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, for sure. It's really good.
Kel, would you like to come on up?
Come on down. Just in time for summer. Outdoor public.
Right? Exactly. Cause we all wanna get outside.
Good morning.
All right, take our link.
All right, Kel Rowan with Mason County Community Development and. This is a proposed amendment to Mason County Code Title Five, Chapter five point one eight, Temporary Outdoor Public Events. Always known as TOEPC, and I do have uh, Randy Collins, our Fire Marshal, and Ian Tracy, the Environmental Health Manager. With me, um, there was a larger group that put this together, so it doesn't come out of um, Community Development Department, but we organized. Um, the efforts to update it. And I guess some background that I didn't put on the briefing sheet is that. This came to our attention moreover of some um, enforcement actions, so some of these smaller outdoor events. Are actually currently prohibited because there is not a pathway for them to get um, a permit and to uh, to handle these. Relatively much smaller than the five thousand people that this, this originally applied to. Um, but there are some minimum standards that the county needs for these folks to adhere to, such as sanitation, sanitary waste. Um, traffic, uh, noise control, some things like that, and so we looked at um. The existing regulations we had in place under TOEPC and decided that we would be able to amend this rather than create something new. Uh, to just capture a lot of these smaller events that are occurring throughout the county. Um, and typically in the, in this upcoming spring and summer season. And so, uh, of course you see the um, line in, line out, and, and really I just wanted to ask the commission. Um, A, if you have any questions, but if you'd rather have a public workshop or if you are comfortable enough to just go through, we could talk about. The different changes in here and then, you know, set a public hearing. Um, you know, if we set a public hearing, I would put it on an action agenda to set the public hearing for June twenty-fourth. Or we could go through a workshop session, whatever you guys are comfortable with, or go ahead and just start asking questions that are in the amendments today.
My first one, uh, my first one is actually just on the, the numbers, so. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and the things that this would encompass, but the idea that uh, literally somebody has a wedding. And has two hundred and fifty people, we're gonna force them to come get a permit from the county?
I think they're exempt. That's, that's the exempt list, yeah.
That's on page one.
Birthday parties, family reunions.
Yeah, anything credit like that is exempt.
There's one other thing that I think you gotta add to the exemption. It's gotta be a political rally, something like that, because. I mean, really this flies in the face of our First Amendment, you know? The right to peacefully assemble is something that's in our Bill of Rights. It's our, it's, it's the First Amendment. So that exists to allow us to, the citizens to have political arguments, to come out and protest. If we were, you know, we, if we had a whole bunch of people show up on the, on the steps out here and they wanted to protest, I think we have to allow for that.
I don't think, I know. I hundred percent agree that it has to be an exemption. I don't know if you can. We'd get sued if you tried to not have that as an exemption.
Yeah, and, and the root of this regulation is for outdoor music events, so it's really what it's focused on, it's not focused on something like a. Political rally or protest or something like that.
Does uh, currently, when uh, ACA, Island Community Association, when they have their events, they have a little bit of music, uh, do they go and get a permit? Do they have to have a permit to do that stuff?
The only place that, the only event that gets a permit right now is Oyster Fest.
Well, that's, yeah, that's. And again, you're saying we need this so at these levels for, because of complaints, because of issues that have occurred, what is the purpose?
So, yeah, so we have, we have some of, it's, it's mixed. Uh, we have some events where people have complained and. It's not legal for that person to have that event because they're prohibited by the main, the D C regulations. Uh, because they're, because of their, the piece of property that they're on, they're just not allowed to do that. And they don't have enough attendees to be able to get this permit as it's currently written. Uh, but we also have some events that are happening and the people that are organizing the events are just. Flipping us the burden saying, no, you're not coming on here, you're not inspecting our food vendors, which they're required to have food service license for. Um, and there's, it's hard for us to go after them when we can't say that there's a legal method for them to, to do this either.
I think of like the Barefoot Festival, I think of the.
That's one of them.
I think of uh, that have been a part of this community for many, many years, I, the idea. I know, I'm just a little bit nervous of the magic, cause I believe in helping people to get to where they need to get to, uh, if it becomes a serious problem, then you have to, I, I. I don't disagree with you.
Well, one, one that you mentioned has been a serious problem for two years now.
I've actually never been to it. I guess no, it exists out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they raise money for brain injury and stuff like that.
It's called Barefoot?
Barefoot Festival.
Barefoot Peace Festival?
Peace Festival, yeah. It's actually pretty big. I've seen videos of it where they got huge light shows and all these other things, so I don't know how many people they have out there, cause like, I've never been there.
A lot.
Have you been there?
No, but I've heard about it, yeah.
I can hear it from my house.
Got it.
Wow. So Commissioners, do we want to. Review any other questions instead of for a hearing or what?
I'd like to get some input from the stakeholders to see what they're saying before we start just doing it. Let's invite a few of them to come and talk to us.
Yeah, it's a, it's a balancing act, you know? Freedom and the right to peaceably assemble and all of that versus public health, public safety, you know, this, so there's a, there's a balancing act there, but.
Well, like we said, the problem right now is they can't legally assemble in these ways in most situations.
And that is.
Is there a law that says they cannot? And would you provide that for us?
Yep, for example, in the rural residential zones where you have single-family residences and, you know, of course, these. Things listed in the exemption, we're not saying you can't have a family reunion, picnic, weddings, et cetera. However, having a public music event with, you know, several hundred people or even dozens of people with food vendors, outside sources. Those are the things that we, we are currently getting multiple complaints about each time the events are held by local neighbors, et cetera. And then also, you know, are the food vendors, are they licensed with the food permit? Um, is there enough sanitation, sanitary waste issues, just all of those things? So it isn't to prevent people from, you know, assembling or protesting and in, you know. Public streets or what have you, or public spaces, but rather those private residential uh, places where. You know, people are hosting relatively large events and.
Sanitation, sanitation could be an issue.
Right, and we don't wanna, we're, we're, we've decided we don't want to prohibit those people from being able to do that if they can meet the requirements. Um, of this code, which of course we're open to making additional amendments. Um, but we, we started with this.
Yeah, right now the situation is someone wants to do this event, Jamie goes, Jamie, you know, Kel Steph member goes out there and says, no, you can't do it, it's not allowed in your zone. That's the end of story. Um, so this provides a pathway for them to do this legally while also establishing some framework for sanitation, health, fire.
But they are occurring.
They're occurring illegal, uh, they're occurring, um.
But not per standard.
But not for, yeah.
We don't have any standards.
Are required.
Right, so it's prohibi- it's a prohibited use, so we take enforcement action.
What does that look like?
Uh, it looks, I think, I, I haven't been involved personally, but.
I mean, it can be infractions, it can be notices, notices and orders, it can be hearing examiner hearings against the person, just like any other code violation.
I wouldn't want a, a workshop because typically our workshops are not for public comment. I would rather have it as a, a hearing or, because then like people can submit.
Submit, testify, mm-hmm.
They can submit their comments or, or.
How about we do it in a different way than we normally would? We do it as a two-part hearing. Where we set it up and give them the opportunity, this way we have the ability to contemplate other than just that, on our, on our rear ends up there.
Oh, yeah, cause we can always continue until every day.
That's what I mean. If we set it up as that, then I, I would be supportive.
I think we've done that in the past, too.
Yeah, we have. Well, not often, but there's a few times where we set it up, where we allow testimonies to be back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I understand the, the issue about public property, but I think protecting people's private property is pretty high up on my list as well. Giving them the ability to do what they want within limitations on their property, so. Uh, yeah, let's, let's get public input from it, that's. That's, we're going to have to do some, if this needs to be addressed, if there, if people are violating some code based on just getting together on their property for some music festival, some event. I, I know of a friend of mine, she has a music festival a couple of times every every year. I don't know that she ever gets up to, you know, she certainly doesn't get up into the thousands. But she might have a hundred people up there. I don't think she's ever asked for a permit, she just does it. She's got a large farm with lots of acreage and, you know, so.
Yeah, I don't get public comment on this.
Yeah, and in that situation, if someone were to make a complaint to Kells folks, they would come out there and say, you can't do it, depending on the zoning, with the specific zoning. But they say, sorry, you're not allowed to do this here, there's no path forward for you, you're you're done. Which is, you know, there's a lot of issues with that.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah, you don't wanna, we don't wanna be in the position of having to shut things down or to prevent these things from happening. You're giving them a pathway through this to do it legally.
Yeah, but sometimes we're creating, that's why we can't shut them down, that's the thing I keep going through in my brain.
Yeah, we we already can shut them down.
We ought to make sure that we're not.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now we can shut them down. This doesn't give us any more powers to shut them down.
Alright, so schedule it for June twenty fourth for the, I guess the first part of two.
Yeah, publicize it as a two-part.
So do you want the second hearing, how far apart do you want the second hearing to be?
Two weeks?
Two weeks, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking. I mean, that gives us time to review if if there's any written comments also. We're gonna make sure that we're well informed and ready for the emergency.
Cause I'm not completely against this, I'm just, I always get nervous and will start to feel like we're taking away the people's ability to do the things they've always done here. Uh there's always an excuse why we do it, but it still doesn't make it any less painful when it occurs. Uh but I do understand, recognize sometimes we have to do what we have to do in order to protect the other people around it, including the neighbor that might have to do it, and I get that.
For the people that are attending it.
Yeah, so I'm on the fence with the whole thing, just.
And that's why we have our hearings, so that we can make sure that we're aware of all of our decisions, so.
Okay, alrighty then. Anything else?
I do, I think we've all been talked to uh by somebody individual. Uh we had some people go out, uh called and they were trying to get somebody to come look at some danger trees that they had on their property. Uh from, now I was a part of the conversation, I'm just telling you how it's presented to me. Uh person never showed up, but then contacted them and said that it's not appropriate anyway, they wouldn't give them the okay to take down the trees if they had to. Uh all that might not be appropriate, I'd like for you to look deeper into that, please. And also find out, cause there there are provisions that I know of. In the old days, just for the D N R, it was a tree length and a half. Now I think by our code, it's one tree length. But either which way, they're allowed to take them out if they're that close to a facility of any type. So we have to find a way to get to guess when that is our job sometimes to help these people out. They don't wanna do it illegal, they don't wanna do it improper. But not even have somebody come out there and look at it and tell them, or just tell them that they would be disagreeing with it cause where it's at anyway is not appropriate. We have to make sure that they're taken care of if it occurred in that manner. Uh that's just how it was described to me.
Right, and I think there's also some insurance companies that are changing their codes as far as fires and um because of all the fires that we've had in the past. So that 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 distance could have changed um as well, it could have gotten.
Yeah, well, it used to be a tree length and a half by by D N R and stuff like that.
What what's a tree length?
Well, the 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 length of the tree, uh that that and another half is how it used to be. But I think our code is one tree.
The tree.
So if it's a hundred foot tree, yeah, if it's a hundred foot tree, then they're all danger trees according to the way it was designed. If it's a hundred foot tree, a hundred foot away by our code, but we used to do one and a half. So I don't know where we're at now, I read something a while back, it's just stuck in my brain.
So you, one and a half, you'd interpret that. So if you use a hundred foot tree as an example, you'd say that there's a radius of a hundred and fifty feet around that tree if you have a structure.
Around the big structure, yes, for a danger tree and stuff is how they would do it. Uh for us though, I think it was one, one length, not one and a half. So we have to look and see what our code is.
Well, I mean, it's more complicated than that because we have critical area regulations plus in our regulations and whatnot.
This even.
But I I fully understand that, it's their information from.
I know it applies to the critical. I know it applies to the critical, I dealt with it many years ago uh at the Thelmer Wetlands. So literally, that's why I know all of this, I dealt with it very, and it was within a walking trail that was that was wooden. And D N R might came out and tried to, wanted to go after us, but it still stood and they were removed. Matter of fact, one of the guys that did it was on that, he's not there anymore, he was on here.
Is there info I can, in order to look into this, what, is there a parcel address, name?
I sent you, I sent you one, um it's been a couple of weeks ago.
We can, we can get that.
But.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll get you the.
Okay, should I, I had handled that from a couple of weeks ago, it's the same thing?
Um, yeah, the the trees, not, yeah, somebody didn't come out, yeah, nobody went out to their property, just took a look at it. They just did it verbally over the phone and and.
And it was dismissive, which is the hardest part, you gotta at least give them the the citizen a chance to make their case.
Right.
Mm-hmm, okay, well, maybe there's miscommunication there, cause I thought we had dealt with that, so, yeah.
I didn't get any confirmation that that it was dealt with, but.
And I just heard about this, I think from yesterday, or maybe Saturday.
Saturday.
Okay.
Alright, anything else for Kel?
It's all I have.
Alright, thank you Kel, thank you. Dave, Dave, you're up. Ian, say.
Okay, that doesn't overwhelm.
I have to stay unfortunately.
Ian, you're welcome to say, how about that one?
There you go. You're welcome to stay.
No, mine was more fun. And then what is it, good morning, or afternoon, what time is it?
It's still morning.
Yeah, it's still that, we got, yeah.
Good morning, yeah.
We're a little, we're running all the way behind, but.
Okay, so good morning commissioners, uh we're gonna start off with Ian.
Yay, alright, so uh today is just an update on the annual report that the State Department of Health does for shellfish growing areas. Uh wanted to just let you all know what's going on with that. Uh I'm gonna share my screen so you can see the the map. Not showing up.
Is that for Stretch Island?
Sorry, my map's not showing up. Try this again.
There we go.
There, okay.
There.
Alright, so uh the first area I wanna talk about is Oakland Bay. Um Oakland Bay has had several changes this year, um some positive, some negative. So first is this uh Triangle P C C here by the the harbor. Um this, we thought this would never change forever. Uh but the city of Shelton has done a lot of work with their wastewater treatment plant. And they did some studies and found that they actually could open this area up for safe harvests.
Wow, good.
Uh that's really good, um sure, Crest County didn't have any access to harvest in their community, uh now they do. So it's uh really, really positive. Uh a perennial issue that's come up a lot, just every year or every other year, is the northern part of Oakland Bay. So there's two stations up here that are threatened, um one's around here and one's about here. Uh they, they come close to, they've, they've technically failed, that's why the condition is on this area. Right now this area is closed during uh heavy rainfall events or after heavy rainfall events. And then also during the summer months, it's closed. Um so it's in, they're calling it threatened again and it, the type of threat it is now, there's not a lot they could do. Cause a lot of times they'll say this area could be open if it's only open during the winter months. Or it could be open if it's only open, you know, not after high rainfall. Um right now this area has all of those conditions on it and it's getting close to a family again. So uh it's in threatened status, something that we're definitely watching. We put a ton of work, our water quality group puts a ton of work into this area every year. Uh we sample both Deer Creek and Cranberry Creek. And we don't get a correlation between what's coming out of those two streams and what's happening in the marine water, so.
So you're saying you're not finding it coming from uplet?
No, uh we we, right now we suspect that it's a wildlife issue, just in that big flat that it could be, you know, bird feces, it could be a lot of things. Um but we're not, we're not finding a lot of sources that we can really point to and say, here's the issue. It's not like, you know, Deer Creek is coming out really high and we know there's something coming up, coming from Deer Creek or something like that. Uh we will occasionally have like a high hit here or there, but we do a coordinated sampling where the day that they sample, we sample the creek. So we can say like, what's happening? And our creek sample will be super clean and theirs will be high. So uh it's a, it's a, it's a tough one. Uh and that's the, that's the area that's uh threatened this year in Oakland Bay. Uh before I leave Oakland Bay, is there any questions about Oakland Bay specifically?
No, seems like that area's been an issue for.
Yeah, it's just, it's just kinda like limping along, it comes close to getting closed completely, then it comes back down and it comes close to getting closed completely and comes back down, so uh like I said, we, it's a.
Any correlation to the tide?
Uh well, what, they, they always have to sample at high tide. Because that's the only, they they sample by boat when they do these rain samples, so they have, that's the only way they can sample it. So um they're sampling at high tide, that's why we suspect that birds come in, there's a lot of food sources for birds in that tide flat. Birds come in, they do lots of feeding, they're pooping all over the place. And then the tide comes in, lifts all that up into the water column, the boat comes in, samples, and that's our theory, um.
I was wondering about the 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 magnitude of the tides, right? So if you've got a, if you've got large tidal shifts where you're having water move quite a bit more, is there any correlation to the, uh uh have they tested after large tidal shift shifts to see if some of that has been diluted and washed out, or is that?
Unfortunately, Oakland Bay doesn't really see a lot of change out of water in tidal shifts.
It doesn't, okay.
It just, it just shifts a little further south and it goes back north, it's the same water, yeah.
And I'm trying, I can't see anything around there that would be causing, usually when there's uh, in my history, usually when there's a a bird issue, there's a, there is some facility, a dock or whatever that they're all hanging out around, I don't even see that.
Yeah, but it goes dry twice a day.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just observations of.
Lots of birds available.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of the birds are eating shellfish.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and you have to relieve Oakland Bay?
There is a large farm line up there, there's a possibility that they're dropping uh.
We've, we've had some issues with farms in the past and those issues have have gone away. Um so we have, we have had problems in the past with with farms.
Yeah.
Um next issue is Stretch Island. Uh Stretch Island has a threatened station, um which is, it's basically this little, this little cove here. Um there's a station right at the opening of that. So we are going to do a project to uh look at upland properties there. But the the problem with the way the state samples is they take thirty samples and then it's a, it's a, those thirty samples just kind of march along and the older samples fall off that list. So depending on which samples are in that thirty sample timeframe, will determine what the status is of it. But the thing that might have caused the issue could be four years ago. And so that's kind of what's going on with Stretch Island, there was a really high individual hit about two and a half years ago. And then we had a sample that was, a series of samples that were very, very clean, almost zero, that dropped off of the list. So that, that's brought it up to this kind of threatened status, but it doesn't mean right now there's still problems at this day. Uh but we're still gonna go take a look at it, um and do some surveys in that area and do some sampling to see what's going on.
How many years is that over?
Uh it depends on the frequency that they sample, there's some areas.
When did the drop off, uh when did the good ones drop off, how old were those?
Uh I can actually look at that right now, let me just turn on that data layer.
Cause I think I'm aware of an actual septic issue that occurred right there uh two and a half years ago.
Well, a lot of the issues that we have right now with our sampling stations are the heat dome and not any specific discharge. Um I believe that's what this one was. Yeah, the really high one was the heat, god, this is so tiny, I don't know how to make it bigger for you. Um you probably can't.
That's alright, just.
Oh yeah, let me see if I can drag this corner. Oh, that's better, okay. So there was a high s- high sample hit we had in March of twenty four for this one. But the oldest samples were twenty twenty. So that would have been, it would have been back in, you know, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty when when those cleaner samples fell off. So, so that's, that's the data for that, um.
You have recommendations for us, Leonard, or?
Uh there's, this is, there's no action or recommendations needed today, this is just informational for you guys. Um the, the, this is, this is a a thing that happens every single year. The D O H does the report and then we respond by looking at those areas that are, that are picked out as having issues. Um like you said, Oakland Bay, Oakland Bay has been an issue as long as I've been working here. Um and it just, you know, it's kinda up and down and up and down, but it never quite gets to good. Uh it's always just, you know, borderline failing. Um Stretch Island had an issue and like you said, those cleaner samples fell off and it just all averaged out to be a problem. It's not necessarily occurring today, but we will investigate and see what we can find. Any other questions on Stretch Island? Alright, and then the last one. Last one is Hudson Port, uh which is Hood Canal six growing area. We have, we have a, I can't say, you know, for sure this is the problem, but there's an issue that's been going on in Hudson Port for a while. Um and it is, it is, it's something that we are addressing with permits and current work right now. Um but it's.
It's a creek or?
It's this, no, it's not the creek, uh it's Station three sixteen. Uh we we regu- we regularly monitor the creek and we haven't had any issues in the creek in a while. Uh but Station three sixteen um is the current one that is is close to failing. Uh but we have some permits and some work that are occurring in Hudson Port right now. Hopefully we'll, uh once those are implemented, we'll take care of that issue. If not, we'll, we'll have to do some more investigating, but we do have a current known issue, that's why these parcels here are brown. Uh the state has closed those parcels individually to help mitigate the situation. But it's, you know, clearly affecting the marine water. Questions? Alright, uh that's the last one I've got for you. Um everything else did pretty good. We were hoping that Lilly WAP would be upgraded this year and Tahuya would be upgraded, but uh not quite there yet, they're, they're close. Uh the state's telling us that probably later this year, they're expecting those to to fall back down enough to to be able to open again. Um and again, that's because we're basically waiting for those old samples to fall off of the, that thirty sample bracket. Uh oh, and sorry, I didn't answer your question thoroughly before, uh when you're asking about like the sample. So it's thirty samples, some areas they actually sample them every single month. And some areas they only sample six times a year.
You answered my question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, my question was about the years back and when the last one's basically dropped off, that's trying to keep track of when I know of the events that happened there, that's.
Okay, yeah, it's just a, it's a, it's a weird range where some sampling stations could clear sooner because, just because the s- the frequency that the state samples them at.
Well, for the Hood Canal, for the, so they held off, I think, seven years on, seven or eight years to try and keep it dirty for a while, to get money. They've been allowed to do another testing, but to keep another, cause they fall off.
Uh on a good note, Anis Bay had an upgrade and we're really happy about that. We've been doing a lot of work in Anis Bay for the past six or seven years. So uh they they turned the portion over here on the, it's not my east west side, in the central area. They they turned this portion, the green one from green to yellow, so not, uh doesn't have, it doesn't have a closure condition on it. Uh so we were really happy about that. And Anis Bay, for the most part, is is going in a good direction, we're really, really happy about that. That's another one of our big focus areas, Oakland Bay and Anis Bay are two areas that take up the most time for our water quality stuff. And that's all.
So that area has a lot, very similar to the top of Oakland Bay, it goes dry.
It has a, yeah, it has a huge tide flare area. Yeah, there's always been a, there's, there's been an argument that happens in the Skokomish Valley related to Anis Bay, it's happened for a long time, um some people say. It's the, um it's the North Branch uh septic disposal facility on, on Blood Hill Road. Uh and we've shown people that's so far away and doesn't even drain that direction, that goes to Oakland Bay. Um then the other argument has been that it's all the farms in the Skokomish River Valley, they're the ones that are, you know, causing the pollution in Anis Bay. But those high hits that the state gets do not correlate with flood events, so uh. We don't think it's that, uh wildlife has been a, a, a major theory of ours. So we've, we've tried to document that as much as possible, that, you know, our presence of, there's enough of birds, um seal activity, stuff like that. But yeah, that's, that's a tough one, for whatever reason, it has been coming down, so it's a good thing.
No good wildlife there. Every time you drive by, you see eagles out there eating and. Ravens, crows.
Mm-hmm, they probably get more flow at that point than they were at the top of Hood Canal, uh of Oakland Bay.
Yeah, they definitely get flushed out easily, more, more easily anyway.
That's cool.
What's the follow-up for you?
Thank you.
Okay.
Melissa.
Okay, um I've got a s- short item here, um and it's a contract, a little bit of background, um we're in the middle of. Five-year planning right now, so by, it's a legislative requirement for us to do a five-year homeless housing plan. Um it has to align, the state has guidance and criteria and objectives that we have to align our plan there. Uh we've been working a little bit internally, I think between the city and the county, leadership at both levels, um but. We're at a state where we're ready to take it to the next level and actually start developing the plan and do uh the public engagement piece. And um the reason for this contract is, well, one, um Commerce did have consultants that they hired to support local governments with developing the plan. Uh they received funding cuts, so unfortunately, they're no longer with them, um but there were, there was a small team. Um that was aligned with that consultant group that did reach out to lo- local jurisdictions to offer help. Um the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board did dedicate a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of the current year's budget. Towards doing a contract with consultants, um and I think that it's a really smart move, I, I, the, being that there is public engagement. Having a really strong facilitator to engage stakeholders, um get input from them and also just be non-affiliated with either local government. Um non-biased, really kind of being there to be a strong facilitator, um that would be part of their role here, um in actually writing the plan. Um so the ask here would just to be su- to support contracting with uh you community advisors, to be our consultants. Um and they'll really kind of hit the ground running, um this will overlap the two contract cycles. Um the majority of the funding will come out of fiscal year twenty-five, so we won't have to take much from next year.
So I uh had some problems when I read this initially, it's a company out of Atlanta, Georgia. My sister used to live on that particular road, so I thought it was interesting, so I looked into them, they're, they're about a month old. They were formed in April of twenty twenty-five, so I reached out to Melissa and said, this seems really strange, um. So, you know, they're the only ones who put in for this RFP.
So they, uh when we spoke earlier this morning, they up, that, they're a month old because they applied for a Washington State. UBI number, um in order to apply for this, but um I don't know how old the actual agency is out of Atlanta, but they.
When you look at their website, it says established in April of twenty twenty-five, so I just found that interesting, um. How are they gonna facilitate from Georgia?
So, um a lot of the things, we put together a schedule where they can do a lot of meetings virtually. Um but we've built in wanting to do uh at least probably one, maybe possibly two in-person uh meetings that they can do. Either at the beginning of this process to do like a kickoff meeting with the local stakeholders or something at the very end. Um and there is a, a, a travel budget associated with this, so that's built into their budget.
And this is a, a grant from Commerce.
You're not lifting out of our budget.
These are, yeah.
Still worried, and I. I'm not a big fan of virtual meetings because it's hard to get feedback from. Somebody on Zoom. And so, uh if we can do more public meetings, that would be great.
We've had that discussion with the consultants and kind of expressed them and, and kind of given them a heads up on who the local stakeholders are gonna be. And I think they're really prepared for not just having large, I think having the large community meetings is really important, but also knowing. We might need a little bit more time to speak with each of an individual stakeholder, one-on-one, so they can do virtual meetings that way, um. But it will mostly be virtual.
And when is this due, it's a five-year plan?
It is due in December.
It's part of our conference plan?
Not as part of it, but it can ser- it's kind of running parallel, so there's a lot of data that can be utilized. Uh we wouldn't have to go out and do like a whole new housing needs assessment that was just done, um but actually analyzing that data and putting it into. The different pieces and the components of the plan, that is definitely gonna be a role that these consultants play. Commissioner Allen, he'll pick you up some questions.
No, I'm just trying to figure out, taking in all the stuff that he had just mentioned, but I'm trying to, to justify, but at the same time, there's no other option. Uh I'm just de- deducing every aspect of it, there is no other o- option, it is not coming out directly out of our pocket, I still hate to waste money from anything that's coming in. But I still agree, I'd like to see more on, you know, hands-on, but it's a little too late for that, it is what it is, this is what they've turned in. So I guess I'm supportive, I guess, every aspect of it just isn't great, but uh, so I guess it's up to you to make it work, right?
Yeah, no pressure.
Yeah.
It's okay, it's a tall order, I'm on it.
The old, the other question that, that sprang up was the contract term is May first, twenty twenty-five, so it's backdated?
Yes, so hopefully, we, they, we went in meeting with them, we did provide them with our current five-year plan as well as the state guidance, so. Um any work that they've done to review that, we'd like them to at least be compensated for it, so they can. A, a lot of our contracts happen that way where it gets signed after the funding is available.
Okay, well, I, I'll support it, I, I, I raised my concerns and you answered them this morning, so.
Looks like all of us are going like this, just a little bit.
A little bit, I have met with them and I am really impressed and confident that they have the skills to work with our local stakeholders. Um and they, they have had experience, I, they developed a lot of the tools that Commerce adapted. Um to support the local governments with Homebase, which was the previous consultants, um and I was very pleased with those, so. Hopefully it works out, but I appreciate the support.
I appreciate we, we got one.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, it's kinda sad.
Yeah.
Alright, so you want that on the agenda for May?
Yeah, May twenty-seventh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anything for Dave?
Would you like to go get that uh Pierce County and?
Oh, David and I got a meeting.
We worked on that on Friday extensively, so.
David and I met for, I don't know how long.
Hour and a half, yeah.
Yeah, and we went over both Pierce and Thurston's.
And are we moving towards?
Right, so what, what I've uh, uh talked to Melissa to do is to say, we're gonna take everything out of that big document that's not a requirement. So align it with, with just the Commerce document, so that will be the requirements, it'll be listed as such on the cover. And the other one is gonna be, um, uh best practices, so there'll be two different documents.
Okay.
So one is, one, one aligns directly with the Commerce requirements, one is best practices as a reference.
But we'll, uh.
We want them to only comply with what Commerce is asking because we don't want anything. I mean, our nonprofits are doing such an essential service for our community that I don't wanna push them away or make it hard for them to do their jobs.
I'm gonna be meeting with um Crossroads this week.
Okay, we need to, to do the best we can to help, you know, mine's based, years ago when I first came in from the planning commission, I came in and uh. The shoreline, literally, uh citizens got together, put together this much, uh tech put together this much, I should have had a document that much, but I had a document that much. Nobody knew where the other came from, it just did, took two years to get it all out.
Yeah.
But we got it out, so I hope we do make that happen.
I think, I think you'll like what it's gonna look like, so.
I appreciate it, thank you.
So, and I'll get my feedback from, from Crossroads, uh you know, later this week and, and we'll just keep moving from there.
Please let us know how that goes.
Mm-hmm.
And if you need somebody there.
Yeah.
I'm here.
Yeah, and then I, I, I did talk with Crossroads a little bit with the uh Commissioner, uh Friday, yeah.
Yeah, I saw Dan in.
Yeah, so, uh eh, just continuing those discussions.
Okay, yeah, Dan came in and talked to me too.
Yeah, I'm anxious to get your feedback on that.
On that other issue, yeah.
So, uh something to throw out there, because of ancillary things from the outside, I think you could take this as a direction from the commission to make that happen. So if there's any questions, the direction's coming from us.
Yeah.
Would you agree?
Yep.
I did wanna give a, a quick update on FPHS funding, so I've been working with, with Wasalfo last couple of weeks, um heavily. Uh the, the state and the budget, which is not assigned yet, so I mean, still subject to change, so the governor can either sign it. He can veto sections or he can have the legislature come back in, we'll see what happens.
Or you can just take it back.
Yeah, just take it back, so it looks like across the public health system, it's gonna be twelve million dollars a year, so that's, that's. Uh local health jurisdictions, Department of Health, State Board of Health and tribes, we agreed to keep State Board of Health and tribes funding whole. We're not gonna pull that twelve million a year out of them, so State DOH gonna take a six million dollar hit, local public health across the state's gonna take a six million dollar hit. So we looked at three ways of, of accomplishing that, do we do a, a straight percentage? And let the health directors decide what programs those come from, which um uh was the, our preferred method, we got, last week when I chaired it, we got thirty-four out of thirty-five. Health jurisdictions to agree to that method, so um we're looking at, do we do a, a s- straight seven percent? Or do we do a, a lower population weighted, higher population weighted, it um. Has benefits, if we do a lower population weighted, the small counties, uh it comes out better for them, if we do a high population, then it's e- it's easier on St. Paul Mission, King County and. You know, so, um right now, it seems like we're all going towards a straight seven percent, so that's, that's where it looks like it's going, now that'll go through uh our state. Um steering committee, and that has, that's an agreement between local jurisdictions, so uh LHJs and DOH. So in twenty nineteen, we had that concurrence process that we got it signed into law, so in, in order to access those funds, LHJs and DOH have to agree. On how the money's spent, or nobody spends the money, so there's, there's a lot of incentive to get that done in June and to get the contracts out in July. So uh I will know more, uh it, it changes every week, we work on it every week, uh coming to a consensus to where we can, you know, sign off with DOH and with. With the LHJs and get that funding, um settled and then get the contracts, many times, we've had issues in a, a year like this, I, I think back to twenty seventeen. Where the legislature went to special session, what, once or twice, I think, that year, and. We didn't get our contracts until August.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, and then we were said, well, DOH said, well, you can, you can, you can spend back to July first, well, we can't. You know, the way our system's set up, we cannot spend back on something like that if we do not have a contract in place, so basically, we lost two months of funding. Uh we're trying to, to get ahead of that this time and, and not let that happen.
What's a, what does seven percent look like for Mason County?
So for Mason County, seven percent's gonna look like about a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and forty-nine thousand. So, a low population end would be ninety-four, high population end would be two twenty-five. So that's why I'm shooting for the, the seven percent straight. So, but it's really unusual to have thirty-four out of thirty-five health departments agree.
As long as you're one of. So, cause I've seen it the other way, where they have, but we didn't like that.
Yeah, yeah, so, no, and, and I'm, I'm the chair of the committee, so we're, I'm weighing into it heavily, so.
You're supposed to tell them that you're the one county that said no.
No, yeah, yeah, that, that one county, I think it's, they were just having a bad day, I'm just, just, I'm just saying. So, um it's, it, it's moving forward and, and as soon as we know things, we'll let you know, and then later in June. Um Melissa and Vlad and I will be going to training uh with Wasalfo, uh looking at the upcoming contract years.
It's exciting.
Yeah, probably something happening.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, any questions?
All I got.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you, alright, you guys go take them right.
Need some hot water.
I actually did already, I couldn't wait.
Do you wanna stay five or ten minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
I'll get my water and I'm gonna grab a candy bar or something.
That's good, going again?
Good morning.
Good morning, I think it's still morning.
Take her away.
We're close.
Barely.
Alright, first action item request is a road vacation and Lovejoy's here to share that information with you.
We have road vacation number four twenty-two, it's dealing with alleys in block eight in the previous first edition of Hootsport. The hearing examiner sent back his recommendation from the hearing that was done March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. He is recommending the vacation, this is one of them that's already vacated by operation of law, so it's strictly just the administrative fee. So we're requesting the recommendation and granting the vacation of the right of way. As per the hearing examiner's recommendation.
I gotta say, we're not granting anything, we're not opposing, it's already been vacated, I had a big battle when I first came in.
Phrase that, we are requesting you formally acknowledge it.
Yep.
Formally acknowledge it's already been vacated.
I know the difference, it's just.
Yell that, I can't believe.
I've got this one that's this and this one that's that.
It must have been a traumatic yelling.
It was, cause it still hits me all these years, well, you remember Bonnie Knight and all that, yeah.
Alright, sounds good.
Alright, and then Commissioners, I have a, a late hit action request and this has to do with. A grant submittal that we talked about a week or two ago, and that's the Safe Streets For All. And it's not a necessary thing, but one of the things they asked for is some type of statement. From the electeds about a commitment to Target Zero and our goals to achieve, achieve Target Zero. And you would think with all of our safety plans and goals and policies for transportation, we don't say anything. Specific to that, and so I would ask your consideration to have a resolution. That commits to the fact that we have a safety plan and that we're partners in helping to achieve the goal of Target Zero and.
Is there a risk?
So, it's worded in such a way that we are, that I hope. Doesn't lock us in like there's nothing saying by twenty thirty, but that's the state's vision, by twenty thirty that we're achieving Target Zero. So I've written this in a manner to say that we are one of the teams, yeah, absolutely. And so, of course, if there's any hesitation about it, um and I did have this originally as a proclamation, but. For signature, McKinsey straightened me out and said, no, we should have that as a, as a resolution. And I'm happy to, happy to reword, but hopefully it's flexible enough Commissioners and reflects our, our local activities.
Do we have to put the year in there?
I'm comfortable with that, I think that.
Yeah, do we have to put twenty thirty in there?
Well, that is the state's plan, so that's what the state's commitment says, and that's why I'm referencing the states and that we're partners in. Helping achieve that goal, so it doesn't necessarily stay, we're.
Yeah.
Trying to achieve, yeah.
Or the state life role.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause that we have an ongoing commitment to improving Mason County's safe system approach and supporting the statewide, so we're supporting, we're not saying we're gonna do it uncomfortable.
Yeah, that looks good.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. And sorry about the late, it was one of the things that we were going through, the grant submittal checklist, and Tennesse says, well, this would be helpful.
Yeah. So you'll ship that on to McKinsey and then she'll.
Yes.
I'm glad you're utilizing Tennesse for help on those things. She's doing a great job.
She is.
Yeah, she is.
She's been fantastic. Yes.
So you want that on the the twenty-seven?
Yes, please. Yeah. Um and then just a quick note, the utility rate workshop is tomorrow, um not today, as on the as on the agenda.
No, there's a lot of, a lot of information.
Well, there is, and we didn't attach the full spreadsheets. And eh not to alarm Commissioners, even though it has like staff recommendation, that's based strictly on a financial, purely a financial lens. Like if we want to achieve balance within the utility, and each utility has its own unique situation, that's why that's highlighted as a recommendation. We know there are a lot of other considerations, and that's partly why we wanna start the conversation now and early, ahead of submitting our preliminary budgets, to make sure that we're hitting the mark with where Commissioners are looking to go on our our rate settings. So mainly, it's just a layout. What are the things we need to look at? Where do we need to get you some additional information? Where do you wanna focus your time and effort? Some will be relatively easy, I think, but others, of course, are more complex and have tougher decisions.
Yeah, you know, in talking to one of our representatives, uh he takes great pride in what he's done to be able to offset some of those costs, and he's willing to take great pride in the future of offsetting some of those
Yeah.
those costs.
Yeah, if he's able to.
If he's able, well.
Yes.
The longer he's there, the more chances it is. He's been there a long time. I've got to dance at him, so.
Yeah. And then the last thing, um thank you, Commissioner, for going out to the Skokomish Valley last last week with us. We'll be meeting with the Conservation District later this week to talk about the FLAP grant and the funding for that project. So we'll follow up on that. And then you may recall that when we were talking about regrouping on our partnership with Army Corps of Engineers, there was one last acquisition that we agreed to, and that was the Richard property. And surprise, Commissioner, it's going to closing, so you've seen a flurry of emails and.
I just wanted to make sure, though, so that Mark, you wanna present a little bit more on that, to get double check that I have permission to sign on their behalf for it. That we already did the process through the the county and that. 'Cause it's so far out, I just want you guys to be aware. If you tell me, go ahead, 'cause it's been a long bill.
It has been a long time.
It has, yes.
So when it's, obviously, it's it's taken so long that you kind of forget the original purpose and where the money was coming from and all that, so definitely something that uh that we'd love to to get finalized.
So you're all comfortable with me signing and getting it done? Yeah, that's one of the places.
That's awesome.
Cute, cute story. When I first got into politics, two thousand and three, two thousand and four, he brought me to his farm, and the first time I ever ate corn, straight off the thing, but I remember it being my hands sticking together. It was so full of sugar that my hands would stick together. It was just like, wow. That's what real stuff looks like. I remember.
Yes, yes.
Is he still alive? Just I know he sold his stuff and.
Surely he's alive.
Surely.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, and I just wanna acknowledge and thank Lovejoy. This has been, boy, between meeting the core requirements and ecology's requirements and all of the coordination and escrow and on and on and covenants um between Ally and Lovejoy, they've just done a fantastic job in making sure that all of the details have been identified and addressed, and there's no way that could happen without their their great attention to detail, and it's much appreciated.
Mark, can I ask you to send me an email saying that the commission is requested that I like that? Thank you.
Definitely a team effort, that's for sure.
Oh, yes, yeah. You need lots of eyes to make sure that everything's addressed.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh I think that is about it, as far as discussion items, and um I think that's it.
Alright.
Cool. And those Commissioners have anything?
I've got over a hundred pounds that I'm carrying around in my van of food.
Oh, no.
They go by the pound. They go by the pounds, so.
Yeah, they do.
My uh my van is squatting down there.
Alright, what do you, what do you, what do you got?
Oh, I'm just gonna drop it off and shelter it here. I'll be going to QOC. I've got cases of cans, so I wanna wait.
Okay.
Cheater.
Cheater.
This stuff is important to me. I don't know. I really will for group, those will.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Have a great rest of the week.
Yeah, you too.
So moving on to our next ones, I'll try and get through these fairly quickly here. Um although I think Nicole, is she still online? She's still there? Nicole, you ready to talk about Paul and Babe?
And the good news?
Yes.
So the, so just to give the Commissioners a little bit of of uh history on this, uh Paul and Babe, that's in, you see them around on the trailers and um in all the parades and all the all the events, uh the museum owns them and they want to donate them to Mason County. Uh we do have some um agreement with who is gonna?
Rachel.
Rachel, um was, and her husband were gonna store them for us. Um but Nicole.
Care of them.
Yeah. And Nicole had to see if we could get them insured and accept them, and so go go for it, Nicole.
Yeah, so um essentially now I did reach out to the risk pool and make sure like there weren't any concerns with liability or property coverage wise, and there wasn't from uh from our standpoint, but yeah, the idea would be that the Historical Society would um essentially make a motion to um to transfer ownership over to Mason County through a uh heated gift, and then if the board uh wished to before, but that they would before with the the acceptance of that, ownership of that asset, um and then essentially what we would do, um in or what we would eventually do is get it registered, um we'd have to go to the state, get it waived, go through their process to get it registered, and then once we get that, um yes, the idea would be to pre- and end them with the contract for our tourism contract, so that 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 would be a, so they manage the events and and that's part of their contract. If they would manage Paul and Babe under that contract, store it, it would essentially transfer that type of risk over to them. Um so we wouldn't have to get it registered in order to use it um in the parade. Um and at that point, we would just be the owners of it, using it in the parade and have volunteers managing it, be- because we wouldn't have time to create that agenda.
So uh me and Nicole talked outside the door a little bit, and as you know, I've been risk pool for thirteen years now and stuff too, so I automatically had a few concerns and worries. Most of them all been overcome, but the only thing that I ask or request is that we put a provision uh with a sixty-day reversal if it, we're not able to get it uh to be legal on the road and stuff like that, that it would go back to them, 'cause we don't wanna have to be responsible for it if we can't get it registered and stuff. Uh it's just a risk that we shouldn't take if we don't have to.
Yes, I I and I do agree with that. I mean, I I um I know we tried to kinda get this done so that we could make sure that Paul and Babe didn't miss the Forest Festival this year, but that is something that um, yeah, there, I can't guarantee that we will get it registered. I've tried to make phone calls or um to State Patrol to kinda get an idea of what that is, but I I do know how it's supposed to be done. I just don't, yeah, there's no promise that we could get it registered.
Is sixty days uh enough of a revision, reversion clause, or do you need ninety?
I was thinking ninety, actually.
I'm comfortable with ninety.
Would probably be a little bit more comfortable.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah. Yep, that sounds good.
So I see a license plate on this trailer right there.
On the trailer? Which one?
I'll reach out to um uh
Worst case, you're gonna go to the hospital.
The Cultural Society again and let them know, you know, what's going on, what we've updated and trying, and then I'll still um try and get all that information from State Patrol. And so we're requesting that this goes on action for May twenty-seventh to be approved for the transferring of ownership, as long as they're okay with that part two.
Yeah.
Alright, sounds, sounds good.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And just so that everybody knows, I gave Nicole permission not to be in the room because she has a definite appointment that she has.
Thank you.
Yeah, seems like they have been licensed.
Yeah.
But I think it's just the trailer, and I don't know about the.
Yeah.
It's the whole thing. It's the thing. So what, I did do some research beforehand. They are permanently affixed, um I love the law about Paul and Babe, and they are um, they uh, those, everything's built. Those weren't just trailers before. Those trailers were built as well. They've never been registered with the state, but the way they are is permanently affixed, is that they are one in in, like, the trailer is the statue, is one whole asset.
We'll figure it out.
Alright.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
Yep.
Have a great evening.
Thanks, Nicole.
Jen?
So the next items are mine. So the first one is the Community Action Council, the commu- or sorry, the Community Development FLOP Grant, the Public Services Grant, um needs to go to public hearing, and so we would like to do that on June twenty-fourth.
Okay, so I'll have two hearings on June twenty-fourth at least.
And if everybody's okay with that, we can move on to the next item, and that is the um the budget amendments for Ju- also for June twenty-fourth, public hearing. And most of these have come to you um already in some form. Um the only two, or actually one on here that I don't think has come to you uh prior is from the auditor for um three thousand dollars in um warrant stock and tax forms. So very minor. The rest of these items, um most of them are due to changes in the cash balances um that affect the funds. Um and then we do have on here um the Sales and Use Tax Fund number one oh three. The city of Shelton, in our contract, um they had a bill that was earned and then paid. It was earned in twenty twenty-four but paid in twenty twenty-five, so that's the reason for that um for that one. The contract was done on an accrual basis, and so this is just to get that on a cash basis. So any questions on any of these?
Okay.
Great. Um I do have one thing that's not on the agenda that I just wanted to bring up. Um Island Lake Management District, the petitions, um there's been enough uh signed. Uh Randy Lewis brought them in this morning and asked if we could fast-track that resolution. I talked to Tim and he said, no, absolutely not.
There's your answer.
Yeah, so I'll be bringing it up for June second, for um a public hearing July eighth.
They also probably, they have to verify the signatures and stuff too, probably.
Um I don't know if that's part of the process. I'll look at the.
I think every time we do one that's required a certain amount of signatures, they have to go to the auditor's office to be verified first.
Okay.
Because they can sign that in front of Walmart, but they don't fit in the district.
Yeah, well, um so July eighth at the very soonest then. That would be. So that's all that I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so uh there is a Human Resources Report in the materials for you guys to review. Uh if you have any questions, let me know. And my next item would be the Mason County Treasurers nomination.
I had a question on that one, actually, 'cause I've been here long enough and we've gone through it, but I usually, the way it's always worked is they're retired first before we look to appoint. I don't remember them doing it so early. You would, you've been here longer than I have.
Weren't you gonna present?
Yeah, no, Mr. Fraser.
Yeah.
That that's what I've always remembered. They they usually retire first, and then we go through the the process.
So I was nominated and appointed before the other, before treasurer Ray was um actually retired. So your appointment would be effective on my retirement date of July first.
We would just affirm the appointment before.
Correct.
So the on the day it goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so which is.
I believe that. You say we can do it. I I'm down. Okay.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
I just know that we've, we've always waited until uh for Ginger, all of them, when they're done.
Yeah, I looked at that spread as much as I could, and it sounds like that's perfect, that's the process.
So in terms of process, so the Democratic Party provided three individuals, um with one individual being uh I I believe a current employee in the Treasurers Office, and they're highly recommending that this one employee or this one recommendation be the choice that you choose. So wanted to check with the commission and see how you wanted to move forward with that appointment process. Would you don't think that you have to do interviews? Uh you could just accept it?
Say that we don't have to. No, according to.
We didn't do interviews in the past. We we knew who they were. I'm comfortable with it personally.
Yeah, I'm comfortable taking their recommendation.
Yeah.
Perfect. Great. So I think we're good to go then.
It's probably gonna take an action, though. That's why I say it's usually so strange, 'cause they do it so early, but.
Well, we can do it effective, effective as of.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be effective July first.
Okay.
Cool. Thank you.
Perfect. That saves us lots of time to get our banking contracts and everything switched over and ready to go.
Next, Fraser. I'm not.
Um so the next item on the on the agenda is to talk about my position. So I'm going to be leaving here at the end of the month, and wanted to get a path forward from the Commissioners as to how you would like to to move forward with county administrator position.
If I can, first let me thank you for giving me a week to think about it and go over some of the different options and look and see what it looks like. I appreciate that. Uh one just, one uh option just came up today. It was mentioned. Uh if we are gonna go out and and go for an interim, uh there's two that have popped up. One, he mentioned, I don't know that she would, but uh uh our old chief of everything, basically, uh if we were to reach out to her and see.
She would not.
I didn't think she would, but just in case, I it was a great.
I would say the words out of her mouth, but I'm not.
It was a great idea, though, when he said it. Uh the other, you know, I'm sure we all received the call from the sheriff, and the idea that uh he would loan them to us, that's a cost savings while that was was would be occurring. That saves us money. The gentleman's already running, uh managing a hundred and five people. Uh he's already knows all the players. So maybe, I guess, recommendation that I would be supportive of would be to have him as an interim. I would also maybe ask that we hold off for a week or two or a couple of weeks to talk about the actual process of hiring somebody, 'cause I love the opportunity to go one more time and talk about the idea of having a director or manager as we had had in the past, instead of that. Uh Pat was not here for any of that, so I'd like to give my my argument, so to speak, to him at one point. Take it or not take it, but at least give me an opportunity to have that conversation.
And to be clear, the tr- the him you're talking about is Travis Adams, the undershirt.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I probably shouldn't mention his name, him him's name. But so that's my full uh effort, thinking about it for all this time and going over it in my head. And uh again, though, I appreciate the time that it took to be able to think it through, because initially, my knee jerk was a lot different than than it is now. I'm a little uh more understanding of where everybody's coming from, and sometimes times, time is our friend. I do wanna say this. Uh I was opposed completely to the position when it was first started, completely. Uh one of the reasons why I was always opposed is because over and over again, you watch them become fourth commissioners. You watch them uh po- uh power uh corrupts absolute, power corrupts absolutely. We got blessed, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. Uh we got blessed because we got a George Washington, a man that didn't wanna be king. It doesn't always happen that way. He did us incredibly well. I'm glad we hired him. I'm gonna go that far with it, because.
I am so glad that I've, that I'm sitting down right now.
Yeah, no, I'm glad he, we hired him. He did us, he did us proud. He, I I've never felt like he was trying to overstep uh or any of that. I can tell you, my belief is um in our financial times we've been dealing with, these last six months, I believe he's actually saved us a million and a half. Watching, you know how I watch my numbers and stuff like that? With some of the things he's done on just holding things out, I think he saved us. Our money is a lot better positioned right now than it would have been if if he hadn't been uh at the helm. And I just wanna thank you for all that and just tell you uh if we're gonna get one, which I don't think we'll have that, somebody like that again, but uh enough said. I like you. But uh, enough said. I like you.
Well, thank you. Well, I don't I don't know the process or how fast we can make this happen, but I would recommend we move forward as fast as possible with Travis Adams so that he has enough time with Mark to.
Oh, you're great.
Pick up on any, any, you know, any of the balls being juggled in in midair, none of them drop, so.
I don't know that answer either because he's already working for the county. He's already, so I don't know that answer. Uh, how would we?
I would say it's something that we need to talk to the sheriff about before, because I don't know, I don't know what he needs to finish before he can come over here. So I I I would say let's talk to the sheriff or have the sheriff come over.
I spoke to him at the um Carenet Auction about it briefly. He's uh, he's been thinking about it, prepared. He has someone ready to step up to be undersheriff. So, you know, let's have a conversation with him, but I think he's already, he's already addressed all of this in his in his mind.
Okay, Mark, what would your suggestion be for how long, how long would do you think you would need with Travis to act as?
Every single day he can get.
No.
I I I don't know. I I think anybody that comes into it is gonna put their own stamp on it, right? I mean, I do think that it's uh, that it would be nice to sit down with him and kind of just talk about the structure of how it works and kind of the expectations of the job and how it's been working. Um, I think that there's some significant changes that have occurred. Um, since we no longer have Diane's position and we we have not filled um the the positions that were created in IT and parks. So those are some pretty significant pieces that now come to directly to the county administrator. Um, I'm glad that you're going to put somebody in the position. I think you have the ability to do whatever process. So this position is actually created within county code.
In two thousand two.
In two thousand and two, yeah. I was surprised that it was that. I did a little bit of research on that. Thank you.
And he was thrown out in two thousand four. I knew that early, he was.
The um, so there's the, absolutely, you guys have the ability to um determine the process that you want to go through to fill the position. And so I guess I would say if you're going to put Travis in as an interim, then you might want to define what that time period looks like. So it's very clear with sheriff's office as to what does that timeline look like? And are you going to go through a process to ultimately fill the position permanently? And so that's, that's something that you, we might want to discuss. I guess I'm I'm interested in your guys' ideas for that so we can get it set up. Um, there is specifically a process in here that talks about um you're supposed to negotiate and execute an employment agreement.
Yep.
So I was talking with um with Tim about this this morning. Uh, and he said that that I don't, I personally don't have an employment agreement with the county. Uh, many a times these positions, um when I talk to my peers out in the community of county administrators, um, it's very rare for you not to have an employment agreement. And so not sure how you guys want to move forward on that, but I do think it's something that you should define.
We're gonna let you go over that issue.
Okay, yeah. Um, when would you like my last statement?
A week after the end of the month.
May thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Okay.
There you go. Do you agree?
No, I don't have that long, so. Um, yeah, be happy to work with whoever and and if you want me to sit down with Travis, I can absolutely do that and.
And I think we start that process and have him sit down and just tell us what we need to do to make that.
I think we need to, we have to. It's.
Make that happen and.
Because there's there's, I know that there's projects that you have currently going on that whoever sits in in your chair
Mm-hmm.
needs to know what's expected and what projects are out there.
Absolutely. Well, you've got a lot of.
You only know what you know.
Lot of stuff coming forward. I mean, tomorrow's gonna be a big day with the utility rates. Um, I think that's a, that's a good discussion to have, especially in ti- in times where we're actually looking at potentially uh doing an interlocal agreement with the city of Bremerton and that we, our initial meeting went well, I think. Um, so we are in the process of drafting a letter back to the city of Bremerton that we'll bring back before the board to make sure you guys are comfortable with it. Um, it's not an interlocal agreement. It's just a letter responding to their initial request. So kind of what does that path forward look like? And you definitely need to get some dates on the calendar and make sure that that process continues. I think that's a pretty significant item. Uh, I can, I can go through and with Travis and and document those things if that's something you guys want to do.
And I do think whichever we choose, if we choose to go as uh as administrator or director, uh as we've had in the past, manager, whatever of uh support services, that is still be a wide look, how we've done it in the past.
You, if you want it.
Let's let's save that conversation, that discussion for maybe next Monday and that way people can sit on it and think about it.
Yeah.
But I do think that we we have to decide sooner than later.
If it's, I guess really it's up to you, Randy. I I think we want to move ahead with offering the interim job to Travis.
I'm with you on that.
So if you're okay with it.
Yes.
I'd say let's authorize her to talk to the sheriff and get the details worked out about Travis.
I'm comfortable with that.
Then then we can actually write that and just get it done.
Just make it happen, but it still may have to come before us in order to to do that, so, but that's next week.
Official action.
We did it on the twenty seven, because that's our next meeting.
Yeah, that that's next week.
That's.
Well.
Yeah, next week.
Yeah.
But he's already, he's already a county employee.
I know, that's the part that's odd about that, so I don't know, so.
Yeah, but.
But you have to put him in this position.
And create the.
So there's, yeah, so I think that there's.
Going from one elected to another.
I think there's some misunderstanding about really what this position does and um and and I've I've read a lot of of comments that we've received um regarding this position and and whether you want to fill it or not. Um, I would love to sit down with individuals and talk that have questions about that because I do not, as the county administrator, have the authority to make any major decision. Um, all of the decisions are brought back before the commissioners. You guys have the responsibility of making all those. And then this this position actually goes out and works with the departments to make sure that they, that it happens.
Now, we've been good with keeping sidebars on your position.
So to to have individual, to have an individual have to come and talk. So if you have a director and if if Loretta has to come and talk to you individually about things, she's gonna get three different perspectives. She's gonna get three different directions. She's gonna have to come back and brief on that. So to, I'm glad Travis can come into it and sit at it and do it because um that'll be much more efficient, much more efficient. He would have to have probably three briefings a week.
Mark, we had over ten years with a support service director and it works exceptionally well. We we just did our job. We we met with them individually.
Agree or disagree on that one.
Yeah. Well, tell me what went wrong with Frank.
What went wrong?
Yeah, what?
You you have, you had a bunch of directors all at the same level and the information I got from Frank or from at that time was different than the information that you got. And I'm sure that that, you know, I can't speak for for Kevin, but it it was not effective.
Yeah, well, that would be an individual thing, but.
And and then let's not even talk about the COVID year because that was complete chaos. Not having somebody in to to be able to do. You you, I was here every day.
So.
And and so.
I never missed a meeting, one, never one.
Stop. Let me, let me talk, please. Having somebody sitting in as the administrator is, to me, is critical because the 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 way that Mark manage manages the three of us, plus the directors, plus the other electeds. So you've got, it's not just the three of us that he is communicating with. It's every department, every director. And and so I can't imagine the time that even me alone would have to sit with Loretta or Kelly or DEM or um Dave or a budget manager. And that's a lot of time that they would be ha- having to come in and talk to each one of us. So their time is is very significant, significantly cut as well.
If I may, Madam Chair, I think we can hold this discussion off till a later date. Because really it's about getting the.
Right, just getting the interim in.
Getting the interim.
Okay.
Taken care of.
Great.
Because that's, you know, that's more immediate than.
We've already agreed on how to do that. We're gonna send you to.
Yep, yeah, absolutely. I will give Travis a call and set up some time and.
Yeah, get ahold of the sheriff today.
I'm sorry?
I'll get ahold of the sheriff today.
Okay.
But it would be good for ha- to have you in that conversation.
Yeah, absolutely. Be happy to.
And probably Travis.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Um, and then there's some, the last items I had on here were um the housing authority applicants.
Oh, yes.
I'm still the same gentleman that we had interviewed with us over and over again. I thought he was a good candidate. I'm supportive of that. Uh, don't like putting people in at the same time they want to run for office. I just, I don't mind if they joined beforehand or joined afterwards. But I don't like the idea that being used as a.
As a campaign tool?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not worried about that, honestly, but.
Yeah, I know. I really don't know enough about, I don't remember interviewing the, yeah, the other one.
Yeah.
The two?
The two.
Yeah, um.
It's like the one, we've interviewed him. He's served us over and over again at the county. So you know he's gonna show up and do his thing. That's what he did with us. He showed up and didn't miss any of that stuff and I gotta appreciate that. Personally, doesn't matter either way, but that someday it shows up is always nice.
Both seemed perfect. I don't know. I'm just excited about the ones that we.
I just saw her the other day. She's pretty impressive.
Yeah. So it it was either Roger or.
Douglas.
Thank you.
My voice in the back of your head is very loud.
I know.
Heard that myself. Um, I'd pretty much go with whatever you guys are, I I don't feel.
You all right, Rodney?
Yeah, Roger, he served us and if he's asked to do more.
That'll work.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Kenzie's got that, so we will go ahead and put that on the agenda.
And then I've noticed that we have a lot of PEC applications also.
Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially now, I mean.
Yeah.
Coming into it now.
We have one, one opening, right?
One opening.
And so will it be Marissa?
We have two openings.
Do we have two? Just on the back?
Just one.
Did we just fill one?
We moved, um.
That's right, Jeff.
Jeff moved from.
We still had two, I think.
Oh.
We have, we have a one and an at large.
No, Jeff was.
No, I think.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah, one and an at large.
Okay.
District one and at large.
Yep.
So we'll schedule interviews with him?
Yeah, I didn't know interviews of people.
I didn't recognize any.
I will, I will look into that and see. I'll I'll verify that we have two positions open.
Okay.
And we can definitely, Mackenzie can help me get some interviews scheduled.
Well, I think it's, I think it's.
Yeah, there's only five sitting around the table.
I think it's Cal's team that organizes those.
There's, the news release says that there's one open seat for the at large.
Oh, Cal, are you on?
I am.
So.
Um, sorry, go ahead.
How many positions open?
We have two, one at large and then since you moved Jeff Carey
Yep.
to position two, then we have the district one position open as well.
Okay, and then you set up the interviews, right? Your team?
Uh.
She does.
That, Mackenzie typically will do that.
Okay, go for it, Kim, Mackenzie.
Okay.
You know, when I first became on the planning commission, I walked into a room that had, I think it was three realtors, two people from the escrow companies, uh the ones that do the land use.
A little heavy?
Bailey and stuff. Well, they understood the law. It was amazing. And then I had Taylor Shellfish and stuff on there and he was probably the best of all of them that were on there. Um, what's his name? Oh, huh?
Bill. I wasn't.
Bill's the one that's still around.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, but no, it was an incredible group. You had to work to be a part of those guys and gals. Chris Kibbuck was one of them.
That's pretty awesome.
Yeah.
So then on on the other open position we have for HR Director, we did advertise that. I've got a number of applicants. We've got it narrowed down to about five, I think, that we wanted to interview. Um, that's great that that we'll have Travis here because I will get him involved in that. I was gonna include Tim Whitehead in that process and then I'm working with the directors to see who else would like to be involved in in that interview process. And then we have uh two individuals from HR that'll be on it.
All right, anything else, Mark?
I'm sure there's a ton of other stuff, but I'll talk to you guys about it. Um, yeah, no, I'm good. I'm I'm glad we have direction. I'm excited to work with Travis on it, so thank you.
Yeah. All right, commissioners, any calendar updates?
If he's gonna look at his, I'll look at mine, Danny.
I don't think I do.
No, I think I covered this last week. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to go to open mic on Tuesday out here. I've never been to it. I'm actually gonna give it a chance. So if one of you guys are there, just know I don't want to talk business. I just want to hear the jokes. I hear them pretty good. Have you guys ever done it?
No.
I don't have anything else until then.
I'm not that fun.
No, I should, no.
I I was actually with my kids out the, a couple of weekends ago in in an establishment that had one of those and it was not.
It was not good.
No.
Well, we'll see. I'm gonna try. I'm gonna go see a regular look with uh at this place on railroad.
Well, good. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I move for your adjournment?
Second.
All right, order.
See you guys in the morning.